All right. Good evening, Council. So, well, welcome back from the Labor Day holiday. Hope you had a good weekend. I'll share with you, I have been on Board Nimitz since 4:00 AM this morning. And just arrived in Indian Island and bust back here in time for the meeting. We've been able to keep the city running, as you can, as you can tell. Thank, thank goodness for technology, right? So, but this is about relationship building. We put in the effort, the Nimitz reached out. And I took advantage of the opportunity to meet with the, the command staff and the crew. And I think it was time well spent today. So, but on to my report. All right, just wanted to give you a brief update on some work going on in the watershed. You, as you can see, and you've approved these projects before and you've, and you know why you approved them. So I'm just reporting back to you the results and some outcomes here. Road improvements, bridge improvements, eight culverts and about 1.5 miles of forest road improved. And when I was saying bridge improvements, two, two bridges replaced. Larger vehicles now can, can access different parts of our watershed, including a type two fire engines and type three wildland fire engines. The total cost, design, bridge purchases and work, as you can see, is 640. And this is 640,000, which you approved in the budget. And so this was all done in coordination and collaboration with Department of Natural Resources, Department of Ecology and the Suamish Tribe. So again, just some great work. There's a few pictures up there that kind of give you a snapshot of some great work going on in our city. All right, next slide, please. All right, Washington 11th Street improvements. You've seen what's the work that we've accomplished to date. A little bit more work to be done on this. As, as the slide indicates, pavement markings, including the bike, the pilot about the bike lanes not till mid-September. And installation of street trees and natural landscaping buffers also anticipated soon. We are close to having a completed project here. So I just wanted to, I think everybody's aware of that the bridge is open and they're now using it. I just wanted to give a quick update on what's left to be done. Next slide. All right, again, we are, we are back. We are working with WashDOT. We will continue to work collaboratively and we will, with our professional staffs, WashDOT's in the city of Bremerton and we'll keep moving forward. As everybody is aware, scope, cost and schedule need to be looked at to get this project to completion. And again, these are, and have always been important considerations. They are important considerations for every single project we do in the city. This one's no different. All right. Next slide. The tree giveaway program. So again, with this is an annual event. We were happy to host this. It's a positive one. And September, Saturday, September 21st at the Public Works Utility Building from nine to 11: is the opportunity for citizens to come out and select a tree. We know how important trees are for our community. And, and so this is the city's effort to be a part of beautifying our, that part of our city. So that concludes my report tonight, Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. One thing I forgot to mention is that Counselor Coughlin is joining us remotely. Next up, we have the consent agenda.
Thank you, President Chamberlain. For approval on the consent agenda are the following items. A, claims and check register. Approval of the following checks and electronic fund transfers. One, check numbers 408151 through 408293. And EFT numbers V41695 through V41780. And the grand total amount of $2,936,940.46. Two, regular payroll for pay period ending August 15th, 2024. In the amount of $1,130,687.91. Three, regular payroll payout for pay period ending August 15th, 2024. In the amount of $988.80. Four, regular payroll correction for pay period ending August 15th, 2024. In the amount of $4,130.32. B, minutes of meeting, August 21st, 2024. C, minutes of study session, August 28th, 2024. D, Public Works Board Loan Amendment C for Pine Road Basin Stormwater Improvements Project. E, approved budget adjustment to the abatement fund. Say six C. Change order number two to the Public Works Agreement for ProVac for Lift Station OB1 and CW1 Wetwell Rehabilitation Project. And six D, local agency agreement for protect grant with WashDOT for Parish Creek Fish Barrier Removal. This concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Again, it was confirmed that nobody has made prior arrangements. But does any other member of the public wish to comment on an item on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll go to council for a motion.
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's vote on the consent agenda.
Councilmember Frye?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yes.
Revolowski?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Mockler?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, next up is public recognition. As noted on the agenda, public recognition provides an opportunity for attendees to address the council on any issue not already on tonight's agenda. And the same as was briefly announced earlier, let me know public comments accepted via Zoom tonight. And it's also a reminder that this is election season. So please refrain from any endorsements or comments about candidates or ballot measures. We ask that you state your name for the record and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. We do have a timer system. We have a pro up there who already knows our timer system. Green means you have three minutes. Yellow means that you have 30 seconds left. And red means that I have to be fair and, and cut everybody off at, at three minutes. And with that, please state your name and feel free to begin making public recognition.
Mary Lou Long, longtime resident of Bremerton, probably 50 years now. I'd like to say the Pledge of Allegiance and I'd like to invite the council and the audience to stand with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I realize that this council has taken the initiative to do a procedural removal, as saying the Pledge of Allegiance, to open our city council meetings and has been, that has been done for many, 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 many years, ever since probably councils were first formed. And I'm very disappointed that this council proceeds or did this procedure and still disrespects the flag, even when a citizen comes up to say the pledge that there is no standing or observing some respect for our flagging for our nation. Anyway, I would like to say that the bridge problem, it was probably to be foreseen, the way the bicycle people and council decided to go with a champagne budget when we really have a beer budget. And now the state has decided that they don't like the expensive plan that the city wants to do and it's put it on hold. So now you'd have to go back to the drawing board. I was one of those citizens that said, since the state had approved a six and a six sidewalks on either side of the bridge, and it was balanced, that that might be the best way to go. Maybe that's what you'll end up with. I don't know. But I'm very disappointed that council went for the champagne budget when you know and I know that Bremerton is not a champagne budget community, nor does it rank very high in the state for that sort of priority. Anyway, that being said, I was at the meeting for the Parks Department's swings and equipment for Haddon Park, and I was very, very pleased with the options that they gave us. Several of them had swings and I'm pretty sure we're going to get swings. So with that, I say goodnight.
Thank you.
Like really short. Hi, I'm Jocelyn. I'm a resident of Bremerton. I'm a part of Bremerton Prayer Walk and Rock the Block. And I'm here to speak on behalf of citizens here that do not normally have a voice. And we've been doing continuous work down on the streets with the, with the Supreme Court overturning grants passed. And having that, I was surprised to see that the first thing on the agenda from Bremerton was to just increase that ordinance. Now we have individuals that we're not able to communicate with. All the resources are gone for them and it's making our job really tough to get them. We've got two pregnant women on the streets right now and there's no place for them to go. There is no place for them to go to the bathroom. There's no place for them to be safe at all. And it, it, for me, it, it really flies in the face of what a community is for and what a government is for, and that's protecting some of our most vulnerable individuals. We've been working, we have, we have been working throughout last summer and then continuously throughout the fall in this year. We've gotten several people off the streets. It was an additional 20 after the last count of 60 last summer. And so we've gotten a lot of people off the streets, but now we can't find them. Additionally, we have people putting up posters of individuals because they're wandering around. You know, there's addiction down there, but then there's also when we, when you don't have the ability to sleep, when you don't have the ability to rest anywhere, I mean, anywhere. They are not able to rest and therefore the mental health issues just are exacerbated. We have more crime. And I would really, really, really encourage this, this city council, I would really encourage you to look at options that are available for those least vulnerable. Talk to us. I mean, we've got, you can do, set up organizations where we can have 10, we can have resting spots throughout the city. We can have places where they're able to use the restroom. There needs to be restrooms down there. This, the city council has already authorized it. We showed you last summer that porta potties were able to be used. There was not a big thing. And we really need to get every other city. You know, I was looking at what it looked like, how, how many people are going to be here by 2044. We really need to do a much better job because it's not only people who are homeless that need to use the restroom. There's so many other people that need to use the restroom. And we need to be able to find some solutions for that. Is I'm done?
30 seconds.
Ready? So I would just, I, you know, I, 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 I'm so in love with the city of Bremerton. The people here are incredibly beautiful. Not just the people who own homes, not just the people who are employed, but the people who are not as well. And there's so much, so much that they offer the community. So I'd really encourage you guys to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Shawna Freitas. I also live in Bremerton and I was here maybe a month and a half, two months ago to also ask about public restrooms in downtown. I live next door to 7-Eleven and so I, I see a lot of, what a lot of other people would like to pretend doesn't exist. And while I'm hopeful that everybody would feel the same way Jocelyn does and morality aside, it's a public health issue. It's, it's a, it's a health hazard. And we're being exposed to human feces daily. I believe that, you know, you guys are aware of this. And so like inaction at this point, I feel like is harmful to residents. And so pragmatically, I feel like I don't have the numbers, but I imagine that the cleanup costs would, could probably exceed what it would cost to just put up the restrooms to begin with in a hand washing station. So I just wanted to add that to Jocelyn's plea for help. So, please.
Thank you.
Name is Levine, Bremerton City resident. I have two points. One of them I'll make really short because I was inspired to speak on another issue by our previous two speakers. One, I know I came in here hot and heavy last week about Fifth and Warren. Thank you, Jane Revolowski, for going and talking to the police for me. Hopefully they'll stop trying to run me over. My suggestion to fix it, because I realized I didn't provide a suggestion last time. Could we put like one of those buttons that shows a flashing light? Because I feel like sometimes people don't see me. But also I think it would just give cars that are really light focused, something to look at that's not me, because obviously they don't see me. That sucks, but you know, a light would be cool if we can find that in our budget. Second point, I am a specialist in physical space and bathroom infrastructure. Not that I'm offering to build bathrooms. I'm not a plumber, but what I'm hearing from the previous two folks who came up here to talk, it resonates with my own experience. When you don't have access to basic needs, what that space is communicating to you is that you don't belong there. And I won't make you read my 171-page dissertation on the topic, but if you'd like to, I have a 171-page dissertation on the topic, 20 pages of which is citations. So I'm, you know, I got an entire degree in this. What we're telling people in downtown Bremerton is that they don't belong here, whether they're unhoused or housed, whether they're here because they come over on the ferry from work and the only bathroom that's available is either at their job or at the ferry terminal. You know, what they're doing is you're telling folks like myself who live here, who spend a lot of time in downtown Bremerton, that I better make sure I pee before I leave my house. Otherwise, there's not going to be really a lot of bathroom access available unless if I want to pay somebody to use their services to get the key to the bathroom. And sometimes I just want to leave my house and not have to pay for things. And I also like drinking a lot of water. I've had a heat stroke. You should drink water. We have another heat wave coming, by the way. I, I really do think that bathroom access is going to be critical. I'm going to have 30 seconds left here. I got you. So I really think it is important that we consider the bathroom issue. I also think that a step up of a porta potties is great. I got a photo of some bathrooms because yes, that's what I do in my spare time is take photos of bathrooms. 30 seconds.
30 seconds.
And I can send you a photo of this fantastic public bathroom I saw up in Port Angeles. Jane Revolowski, you're getting a photo of a bathroom. That's my suggestion. Put in bathrooms. Also that light.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and staff. My name is Lissy Dawgs and I'm here today to share my disappointment with the city council. Your indecisiveness is costing the citizens. I'm here to speak about a few things. There are professionals who developed a great plan for the Warren Avenue Bridge. Engineers who do this work, yet you all feel you can change the plan and stall all the while you have put the project funding in danger. ADA access to the bridge has been pushed off again. It is arrogant to think you know better than the professionals. To have WashDOT pull away from its agreement tells me you are micromanaging the work. Thanks to Mayor, Mayor Wheeler for working with WashDOT to continue to move this project forward. Hopefully the council can move forward and not endure more costs to the citizens. And your indecision on contract negotiations with the police guild is moving possibly towards arbitration. This decision to move towards arbitration is costly. This costs the city money. Ultimately, it comes down to respecting the work of professionals and the city employees. They are the ones who actually do the work for the city. As politicians, it is your job to make decisions. As city council members, you should respect and support the professionals that work for us all, the public servants. So do your job as city council. Stop micromanaging and costing the citizens more money. Come to a decision with the Warren Avenue Project. Stop stalling on the police guild union contract. Your indecisiveness is costly. And please don't get caught up in your own self-importance and treat the staff with respect. Rely on the professionals for their expertise so they can do their day-to-day work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, everybody, I'm Travis from Bremerton. First of all, on the Washington Street Bridge, congrats to sticking to your guns. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for pushing for the case. I know our representatives were on it. We got WashDOT back to the table. We're going to build the right structure for Bremerton. So that's fantastic. On her other bridge, however, the roundabout that was just completed, gosh, it's not very good. From a perspective of someone walking or riding their bike. It could have been amazing. Could the, the center point of the city in the most beautiful, second most beautiful bridge in the city, the first place tourists walk to, place to meet friends. Instead, we've got this skinny little sidewalk on the south side. So just run through the faults real quick. The, right in the place where they send bikes up onto the sidewalk, that makes it a shared use path. There's a pole right in the middle, this eight feet of free sidewalk. Pedestrians walking this way, pedestrians walking this way and bikes to share. It's going to be a conflict zone. On the other side, westbound bikes heading into downtown. Clear on the far side, they put a literal booby trap. You gotta go out and look at it. It could have bamboo spikes that make it slightly worse, but, but someone is definitely going to get hurt here. This is definitely negligent design that will definitely hurt a cyclist. It's only a matter of time. The, the, the sidewalks are so narrow, and I think this is the real core of the problem because the lane width is so wide. 16 feet, 16-foot sidewalk, car lane all around the roundabout. So 16 here, 16 here, 32. Once you make that decision, once you make that choice to put so much space solely in the, as the property of cars, there's simply not much room left, right? Did not have to be that wide. Lanes on I-5 are wealthy wide. Why is this one 16 feet wide? Squeezes everything else out. It's too bad. It's already spent $8.3 million and arguably it got less comfortable for pedestrians and cyclists because there's going to be, there's going to be interference the whole way down. It's too late, obviously, for this project. The cement's already set, but it's not too late for Six. It's not too late for Naval. It's not too late for Warren Avenue Bridge. It's not too late for Almyra. Look, you have a session a little bit later on. We're talking about where civilians can come in and talk about the comp plan. That's great. We need to go to community centers at 6:00 PM on rainy Decembers to talk. But what's more important, what's more important is that this group of people gives some oversight. You're not a subordinate group to the, to the mayor. You're not, you're not a lesser part of government. You're co-equal, right? The only oversight over the projects that they make is from you all, right? You guys must engage. Sixth Street is coming soon. If Sixth Street looks the same as, as they did up here, where they absolutely prioritize cars, nobody's going to be happy with it. Please engage.
Thank you.
Does any other member of the public wish to comment during public recognition?
I like to give a lot of space just in case. Sometimes folks are still thinking about it.
Okay, I will now close public recognition and move on to general business.
General business item 6A. Confirm appointment of Timothy Barker as the Director of Parks and Recreation at Payban 20, Rate Four of the 2024 Management Professional Confidential and Fiduciary Salary Plan. Presenter tonight is Mayor Wheeler.
Okay. All right, thank you and thank you, Council. And, and so, and thank you for being a part of a very deliberate process. And just to recap, we conducted a very thorough nationwide search for candidates. We hired Prothman to help with that, that, that process. So narrowing it down to five, the top five ended up with the top three. From there, we brought in a, a small subcommittee of council members to share the process that we used to get down to the three and then to also get a preferred alternative. So after conversation with the council, jointly administration and council agreed on the top candidate and did not want to make a final decision though, until we met after discovering and learning about the process, until the council and Planning Commission members met the candidate in person. So we brought that candidate up here. We had an in-person discussion, lengthy one, about an hour, hour and 15 minutes, hour and 20 minutes of, of communication with lots of questions, lots of feedback, lots of information. Council and Planning Commission fully endorsed this candidate I'm bringing forward to you tonight. And we appreciate the expediting this. We, we feel there's a lot of important work that needs to be done in a fully-staffed. Parks Department helps a lot, goes a long ways towards achieving those goals. Two projects we want to get done. Haddon Park, Kitsap Lake Park are in the hopper right now. We are working hard to get those done. So that, that's it tonight, Council. Kylie's here. She was a part of the process. And also I have, I stand by for any questions.
All right, Kylie, I'm sorry, Attorney Fennel, do you have any other additional comments for this presentation?
You know, I think earlier the mayor said he's been up since 2:00 AM or 4:00. It is the Parks Commission that was planning.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for the correction.
Yeah, so I believe Mr. Barker is joining us by Zoom and, and is here to answer questions. I put together the materials that were in your packet with Ms. Nelson. She's not here tonight. And we tried to include what we thought you would need. Have Mr. Barker's resume. We have the salary scale. And again, certainly for the council members that were part of the process, defer to you to speak up your thoughts on that.
I think as part of the presentation, I'm going to go ahead and should we mention just kind of the part of the process as part of the presentation? Counselor Frye, would, or do you, okay, let me just, just for public transparency, part of the process was that the mayor invited an ad hoc committee that composed of Counselor Coughlin, myself and Counselor Frye to, to be part of an explanation from Prothman on how the position was sought out. So we were able to take a look and have even understand the scoring process and how the rubrics were developed and, and how candidates stood up against different measurements. So that was a really wonderful part of the process. And then the, another part of the process was actually having Mr. Barker come, fly in and meet with members, with the ad hoc committee and then a couple of members of our Parks Commission. And, and to answer questions at that point in time as well. And so Counselor Frye, do you have anything to add to just the, the process and not necessarily qualifications, but just the process itself?
Well, I very much welcomed it. When I got the phone call, it was truly an honor. And I think it was a rich experience. I learned a lot about how the process evolved. It was a national search with a nationally recognized consultant. And so I think the process was vigorous. And without saying anything about qualifications, you know, sometimes things just come together.
And Counselor Coughlin, do you have anything to add about the process?
No, I'll just wait until we're deliberating.
Fantastic. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Okay. Seeing, oh, 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 do we have somebody online? Okay, it was Counselor McCoughlin. All right. All right, well, seeing none, I'll go to council for a motion on this. I think Counselor Coughlin wanted to make the motion. Let's defer to him.
Sure, thank you, Council President. I move to confirm Timothy Barker as the Director of Parks and Recreation at Ban 20, Rate Four, the salary schedule, and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute the attached letter of engagement with substantially the same terms and conditions as presented.
All second.
All right, we have a motion and a All right, we have a motion and a second, and we are open for discussion. Counselor Coughlin.
Absolutely. Thank you, President Chamberlain. I just want to want to say I'm really happy that we as a council took our time to carefully craft the job description and spent some study sessions doing that. Based on feedback we've we've heard from the community and what we think they they are looking for in a parks director. Because this is a big, it's a big deal. It's a big position. So I'm glad we took our time. I'm also glad we insisted and did that national search. I think we we owe that to the citizens for such a big position. And I wanted to just say thanks to Prothman Consulting and especially Steve Worthington, who were just excellent to to deal with from my perspective. I think, as you all said, we went through many candidates in detail with Prothman Consulting, President Chamberlain, Counselor Frye and myself. And I know the three of us asked a lot of due diligence questions and took a lot of time with 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 all the candidates on paper. And at the end of that meeting, came to the same conclusion as the mayor that Mr. Barker would be an excellent fit and the best candidate for Bremerton. And then we asked to meet him in person and Mr. Barker was was kind enough to hop on the next possible flight out. And then, you know, we also asked for members of the Parks Department to meet him as well as that is one of their one of their tasks is to advise council and mayor on big decisions like this. So I'm really glad he was able to fly out. Everybody on the three members of council and members of Parks Commission were able to ask questions and Mr. Barker went into lots of detail on those questions, which was much appreciated. And I just want to say I'm impressed by several qualifications. I think Mr. Barker has extensive experience in a really similar sized city and would be able to just just prosper right here in Bremerton. Really impressed by all his professional parks associations and really having that that professional standards. And I think a real, a real vision of how to move our park systems to the next level and really make it modern. And it's really impressive as well, just his community involvement, committing committed to living in the city that he that he works for. And I'm sure he will grow some deep roots here once he relocates. And really demonstrated experience of leading and managing volunteer programs, which I know is a big goal of ours. And the really tricky still of getting money and fundraising within the community and really impressed by some of the things he was able to do in his career. And finally, just that really demonstrated skill and engaging the public, communicating, gathering input and the ability to really get consensus on some tough issues and I think will work well with everybody across the government and the city. So I think he'll be an excellent addition. I had time to ask him questions, so I don't have any questions for you, Mr. Barker, except thanks for thanks for being here. And I'll cede my time to the rest of council to ask him questions.
Thank you, Counselor Coughlin. Counselor Frye?
I think that Councilmember Coughlin identified, you know, all the winning attributes and how they pertain to the job description that we worked so hard on. I want to just elaborate, though. I I was so impressed with Mr. Barker's involvement in the accreditation organization on a national level for parks and recreation. This is an organization that monitors best practices out there, standards around equity as well as, you know, other aspects. And it was, it was welcome to hear that. He used words I really like, like measuring impact. And he'd already been around to several of the parks in Bremerton. I also liked his commitment to live in the city that he would be working for. So yeah, and you know what? He just seems like a really nice guy.
And yes, Vice President Mokler. Right ahead.
I I'd really like to thank this whole council. It was initially my idea to alter the job and update the job description, and I think this council like really turned out a great job. I want to particularly call out something that may not be noticed is which is Counselor Rebalauski's asking us to jettison the requirement that any applicant have a college degree where that was not directly clearly necessary for the position, like the city attorney, yes. So I and I I joined Counselor Frye in her enthusiastic pleasure that this Parks Director plans to live in the city he serves as that is most uncommon. The last stats I have are like 30% of Bremerton employees live in Bremerton. I did want to ask Mr. Barker a few questions about desirable qualifications that stem directly from the Puget Sound Regional Council and the Growth Management Act above it in our new comprehensive plan with a focus on native native species, planting native species, climate resiliency. And I don't know if this is in the any larger plan, but I'm sure all of us have seen how wildly popular community gardens are, and these are three things that are in the desirable qualification. So if Mr. Barker is available, we were told he would be.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Can can you make a, can you become visible?
Ah, that's beyond my ability, maybe. I can see me. Can you not see my video?
There we go.
Okay.
Hi, how do you do? I'm very pleased to meet you at one remove and so I just wanted to ask you about three of the desirable qualifications, the knowledge of Northwest native plant and tree species. I noted that you're you you got your BA in Tacoma. So I was just want and that you spent quite a bit of time in Oregon. So I was wondering if if you could just briefly address that, please?
Sure, yeah. And thank you for the question, Counselor. Yeah, I received my my bachelor's from Pacific Lutheran University, so a proud Lute. And I was happy to when I went, when I've gone and visited Bremerton to see actually some Lute gear. It's been a while since I've seen that. But yeah, I worked for the city of I've worked for the city of Wilsonville, which is a suburb of Portland. So more on the recreation side there, same with city of Portland. But in my last 17 years in my current community, worked very closely with a conservancy group. We have a nature park here that just recently doubled in size up to 40 acres now. And it's we're very much about demonstration areas, including community gardens. So there's a number of different areas, obviously drought tolerant type trees and grasses and those types of things is something we've really looked at the educational side of of what we do within Parks and Recreation. And that's a lot of my experience on that angle has probably been through my involvement. Obviously, I'm a staff liaison, but I'm also have been on the Board of Directors for that conservancy the last five years. But so I do have some some experience there. Have, you know, obviously, the the there's going to be some reading involved to to get caught up on some things, but very familiar with the the climate and the ecosystems within the North Pacific Northwest is that's where I've spent most of my life. And so I'm excited. That's one of those things I was really excited to see is something that came up in one of the supplemental questions. So I was glad to see that, too. But yeah, that's that's an area that I do have some some knowledge and experience in. But definitely I'm excited because it is something that I'm not heavily involved in now and and would really love to be able to to develop my skills further in that area.
That's great. And you answered two, two, two questions in one. So let me just move on to my last question, which is it it seems as though you have this experience in planting native trees to mitigate the climate crisis. As you know, Bremerton is not a high income city, and many people lack air conditioning and actual areas of shade where people can refresh their spirit and not get heat stroke, both those things. It is something that this council approved in this job description.
Yeah, absolutely. And we've done, especially out in the area that I'm in. We have less than 10 inches of rain a year, so our tree canopy is a very important product within our community here. So that's something that I obviously I would want to look at as far as what is even within code. You know what types of things that we can incorporate to be able to incorporate those types of things. Actually, excited to get back to a little bit of the Northwest weather. It's something that I have I've definitely missed being being in the middle of.
That's that's really all of the questions I have. Thank you very much. You're it's it's wonderful to hear somebody answer questions straight up and in plain language. And for my part, I hope you have a safe moving experience out here.
Appreciate that.
No, okay. All right. Mr. Barker, this is Jennifer Chamberlain. And first of all, I wasn't able to to meet you in person, and I'm excited to meet you in person at some point in time soon because we're going to breeze through this. You're going to be confirmed and you'll be our new Parks Director shortly, I'm sure. But I was, A, I was impressed that you recognized my voice because you were doing homework and looking at our council meetings in preparation for your for your interview, but also I was really impressed with some of your answers. And one thing that I that I had mentioned was just about was about mentoring and and some other things that you talked about when I was still on the call with you were about the the program that that you're that you're a part of. Can you just take about three or four minutes and give us a little introduction, give the city a little introduction to as to to who Timothy Barker is and and what you're hoping to bring to Bremerton?
Sure, yeah. And just in general, as opposed to kind of the mentorship, I mean, I can briefly mention, you know, that to me as a as a director, mentoring your staff is a key component. You know, whether they're you're mentoring them to a point that they can move within your organization, that's your ideal. But at the same time, if they aspire to do bigger, better things that you may not be able to do, you know, I'm going to be there to help them become who they want to be, and I don't want to restrict what they want to do. You know, moving forward and obviously want to create a staffing model that everybody enjoys wanting to to be there and and come to work every day and are motivated. That motivation's a big, big deal to me. But so me, just in general, just just a brief introduction. You know, one thing it was mentioned, very, very similar community that I'm in now, a little bit smaller, but have a cemetery, pool, number of parks, recreation programs, senior programs. But a lot of lot of similarities within these two communities. And and being out here for 17 years, I'm looking for a new challenge. Want to relocate back to what we refer to as the West Side. But, you know, Pacific North in the Pacific Northwest, been in the inland area, but want venture back over, really excited. You know, I've done, as you mentioned, done a lot of research on the on the community. Probably, I don't know how many hours of YouTube videos I've been watching of people walking through downtown. But I am very much someone and it kind of, I guess, gets back to the back to the association type work that I've that I've done with the CAPRA, which is part of National Recreation and Parks Association. So the accreditation piece is I've definitely learned a lot about the community already, and so I really want to be able to hit the ground running and try to do as much research as I could because I want this to be the best situation for both the city, the staff, council, and for myself personally. I want to be in this role for the long haul and just again, want it to be a community that I'm gonna take on some challenges, which I really enjoy. I can share the experiences that I've gained over the last 25 years in the field and just improve upon what Bremerton has it already at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Barker. I was really impressed with this candidate for multiple reasons. And I think you're going to be a really great asset to our community. Counselors, do you have any other questions or shall we vote? Okay, we're going to vote.
Counselor Member Coughlin?
Yes.
Rebalauski?
Yes.
Good now?
Yes.
Mokler?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Barker. Welcome to the team. Next up, we have Item 6B, Presentation on 2024 Comprehensive Plan Updated Schedule and Review Opportunities. I forgot we're not in a study session and I just took Clark Hoover's line, so I'm going to turn it back to you.
Our presenter tonight is Planning Manager Garrett Jackson.
Okay, good evening, Council. Just adjust my screen here. All right, hopefully everyone can see my screen. Okay, we are here to talk about the Comprehensive Plan Update. Specifically, we're here to familiarize the council with the adjusted comprehensive plan schedule and when review opportunities will be available for the public and the council to review individual elements. All right, and we're proposing a quick review for those at home. Just what a comprehensive plan is. The comprehensive plan is essentially the 20-year development plan for the city. It includes topics like land use, housing, economic development, the environment, transportation, and other city services. Our local comprehensive plan needs to meet the criteria of several other jurisdictional authorities, including Washington State and the Growth Management Act, which requires that we plan for forecasted future growth. The Puget Sound Regional Council, which includes Kitsap, King, Pierce, and Snohomish Counties and their guiding document, Vision 2050. More locally, the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council, which includes all of the jurisdictions in Kitsap County and their guiding document, the countywide planning policies. So our comprehensive plan would need to meet all of these guiding documents in order to plan effectively for population increases in the city that are forecasted to be about 64,000 people by the year 2044 and about 58,000 jobs by that year. Now, that estimate is a is approximately a 46% increase in population and a 32% increase in jobs from 2020 numbers. We are regionally significant as designated by the Puget Sound Regional Council. We are designated as a metropolitan city, and our peers include the city of Bellevue, Seattle, Tacoma, and Everett. We have two regionally significant growth centers, including a manufacturing industrial center out by the Bremerton Airport and the Downtown Regional Center. Now, both of these geographic areas are regionally significant to the Puget Sound in being able to absorb jobs and population increases. Moving on to individual elements, the land use element is due to be reviewed by the City Council at the September 18 City Council Meeting. Most of the land use changes that are proposed are focused on the Downtown Subarea Plan, which includes an increase in height to 80 feet and removing maximum density standards. With more modest increases planned for the general commercial, high-density residential Bay Vista Subarea Plan and medium-density residential zone. Now, if those of you at home would like to know more, please go to bremerton2044.com where we have a video available that describes our growth strategy in more detail. The comprehensive plan for the land use element, the appendices of that element are due to be reviewed by the Planning Commission at the September 16 Planning Commission Meeting. All are welcome to attend. The draft vision, goals, and policies for the land use element are currently receiving a preliminary review from the Puget Sound Regional Council to ensure that our document, as we have now, is in conformance with Vision 2050. This should make the future PSRC conformance review a little more streamlined. All of the vision, goals, and policies for individual elements are being reviewed currently. The Downtown Subarea Plan has revisions have been reviewed by the city, excuse me, by the Planning Commission as well as the Puget Sound Industrial Center Subarea Plan, both of those plans with with some fairly significant changes. Uh, the housing element of the comprehensive plan is, is due to be reviewed by the council at the October sixteenth meeting. There's been some significant changes from the state of Washington and how comprehensive planning for housing occurs. Uh, we now are required to plan for different income bands uh, for our city, not just basic housing, but housing for every income band. So that's anywhere from emergency shelters to those making a hundred and twenty percent uh, or greater of area median income. Uh, to accomplish that, uh, the Department of Commerce has set out guidance. Uh, you'll see here in this chart that the uh, Department of Commerce recognizes that if you allow for multifamily development for low-rise multifamily, then that satisfies income requirements from zero to eighty percent of AMI. So it's for that reason, for equity purposes, that this comprehensive plan update proposes to allow for multifamily in all residential districts. The uh, state also requires that we have some provisions for missing middle housing. Uh, the city already allows for uh, some missing middle housing, including duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, and cottage housing in all residential districts. But new state requirements would uh, would have have uh, a minimum of four dwelling units be allowed per lot when affordable house, housing is included uh, and limits the city for uh, required numbers of parking spaces and lot size. Uh, you'll see here, this chart is uh, the allotted number of housing units by income band that are designated for each Kitsap jurisdiction. Uh, this is provided from the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council, and this is the bar that the city needs to meet uh, for our comp plan update. The Planning Commission is due to review the appendices for the housing element at that same uh, September sixteenth meeting, and the uh, vision goals and policies are currently being reviewed by PSRC. The economic development element is due to be reviewed by the City Council at the November sixth Council Meeting. Uh, just a quick high-level snapshot of the economic conditions uh, shows that um, Kitsap County has dependence on federal employment far outweighs our peers uh, throughout the country that have military installations also. So Washington DC, Norfolk, Conalulu, and other jurisdictions, uh, Kitsap County far outpaces those in percentage of your total employment that's due to the federal government. Uh, this is likely going to be buttressed by the ongoing Shipyard Infrastructure Optimization Program, or PSYOP, uh, which promises to have quite the infusion of economic activity throughout Kitsap County, including Bremerton. Another source for jobs in the city of Bremerton is the Puget Sound Industrial Center, which was referenced earlier, um, which has a capacity for over ten thousand jobs, but is in need of investment in infrastructure to realize that vision. Now with this opportunity, there are also uh, some being left behind, including uh, US Census data showing that over fourteen percent of those living in the city of Bremerton uh, live in poverty as compared to our, our, our cohorts throughout Kitsap County, which have a poverty rate of uh, just over eight percent. The Puget Sound and uh, the Puget Sound um, Regional Council puts together some opportunity index mapping, which includes an index of uh, education, economic opportunity, transportation options, and other factors, and they map those results. Uh, and they, they show that Bremerton is, has a, a high concentration of low opportunity compared to our Kitsap uh, neighbors. Uh, the Planning Commission is due to review those, the appendices for the economic development uh, element uh, in the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-four. Uh, PSRC is currently reviewing, reviewing those vision goals and policies. And we have provided outreach to the Greater Kitsap Chamber of Commerce, uh, Kitsap Economic Development Alliance, Kitsap Building Association, Downtown Bremerton Association, Charleston Business District, M and N Business Association. The environment element is due to be reviewed by the City Council in November twentieth. Uh, Washington State is a leader in climate change in our country. Um, the state currently requires that greenhouse gas emissions be reduced to forty-five percent of nineteen ninety levels by the year twenty thirty, uh, and being reduced all the way down to a net-zero carbon emissions by the year twenty fifty. Uh, there are new criteria um, for climate change and resiliency that are due uh, with this comprehensive plan as far as uh, urban tree canopy and greenhouse gas emissions are concerned. Um, and then additional criteria that will be required in an, in another update by twenty twenty-nine. The comprehensive plan um, appendices for the environment are due to be reviewed by the Planning Commission in the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-four. Um, once again, those vision goals and policies are being reviewed by PSRC. And uh, development standards um, for uh, related to the environment can be expected to be reviewed by the Planning Commission as early as the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-four uh, through the second quarter of twenty twenty-five. Our Shoreline Master Program and Critical Area Ordinants were updated in twenty twenty-one, and there are some tweaks to best available science uh, that are required, as well as updates for Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife uh, riparian management zones. Uh, transportation and city services element are both due to be reviewed by the City Council on January fifteenth of twenty twenty-five. Uh, the transportation element uh, is the multimodal network that connects uh, users in the city to destinations in the city and the region. Uh, that can be automobiles, transit, ferries, and other, other modes of transportation. Um, and this also includes active transportation, which are non-motorized modes of transportation, namely bicycles and pedestrians. Um, there's likely going to be an independent active transportation plan that may be adopted after the comprehensive plan, but there are elements of active transportation that will certainly be adopted with this comprehensive plan update. Uh, the Public Works Department is currently taking public feedback um, on, for the development of that active transportation network. Uh, they put out a uh, public survey. Um, they plan a potential public open house, and they are currently uh, requesting feedback on a pedestrian and bicycle network web map. Uh, this is available at bremertontwentyfortyfour.com, and that comment period ends September eighth. So please, if anyone in the audience is interested, uh, go to our city webpage and um, provide some feedback on those priority networks. The vision goals and policies are currently being reviewed by PSRC. The Planning Commission is due to review uh, those, those uh, elements uh, the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-four. Uh, the transportation network modeling is complete for existing conditions for six-year and twenty-year planning. Um, and there is a tentative open house for the TE planned for October of this year. Uh, keep your eyes on bremertontwentyfortyfour.com for updates there. Uh, the wastewater comprehensive plan is ongoing. Uh, their modeling for capital projects is in process. Uh, the stormwater comprehensive plan uh, and drinking water comprehensive plan have both already been adopted by the City Council and are expected to be adopted by reference uh, in the comprehensive plan. Some additional schedule details to consider. Uh, on October eighteenth is when we have scheduled to release our draft environmental impact statement. Um, in January of twenty twenty-five, we expect to release our FEIS, or Final Environmental Impact Statement. Uh, and, and uh, the February, in February of twenty twenty-five is when the Planning Commission recommendation for uh, comprehensive plan adoption will be reviewed by the City Council. In April of twenty-five, uh, the City Council is scheduled to deliberate on that comprehensive plan um, with an adoption date being in May of twenty twenty-five. Uh, now that being said, these functional plans that are being put together are very intensive for public comment and uh, and require a lot of technical analysis. So to meet these dates, um, things will need to uh, go according to plan. Uh, if there are revisions to the schedule in the future, the City Council would be kept apprised. And with that, I'm able to take any questions.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Jackson. And so uh, so something that I should have established to begin with was um, there's no action that's being taken by council today, so the purpose of this is to solicit public comment. Um, so I'll look at it for public comments and councilors will have these other dates um, to be able to digest uh, the information that's going to be brung, brought to us. I almost said brung, brought to us. Uh, the first one's going to be on uh, September eighteenth with land use. Uh, so with that, does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Do we have any public comments online? Okay. All right, going once. Going twice. Mr. Jackson, thank you for the presentation, and I will look forward to seeing you at uh, the September eighteenth study session. Okay, and now uh, we will go to council reports, which are opportunities for council members to provide updates on any issues or events taking place in their district, announce any events they've recently attended or planned to attend, or to speak on any other city-related topic. Since this is the first council meeting of the month, um, Councilor Fry over here takes the heat off of me with District One, and we're going to go to District Two for the first report today.
I'm not going to take much heat off of you tonight because I don't have a report. I think uh, I've been active enough in communicating this week, so.
Thank you. Next up, District Three, Councilor Coughlin.
Uh, thanks, Council President. Uh, no prepared slides, but uh, I think I'll just respond to some of the public recognition from earlier. Um, first regarding, you know, homelessness, I want to make sure folks know that the uh, law change we passed should not be affecting any availability of resources. In fact, since we still have open shelter space, um, there should be absolutely no change um, from before passing it to now. So if folks in the community out there are seeing a change um, in enforcement or in available resources, it should not be due to the ordinance, but please reach out to administration um, if, if that is the case that you're seeing. And I want to make the case that council is still continuing to work with our community partners um, on our uh, Bremerton Shelter and committed to that project and, and good progress is being made, so that is, that is in the works. Uh, and then regarding the, the Warren Bridge, I, I heard a lot of incorrect information earlier, so let me, let me kind of run through and, and correct some of that. So council has made a decision many months ago on a preferred alternative. Um, and it is the least expensive option. So there's, there's no champagne. We chose the least expensive option. We made that decision like five months ago. Um, and to run through the timeline again, it was in April twenty twenty-one, so before many members of this council, including myself, were serving. In April twenty twenty-one, the city and WashDOT entered into a contract to widen one or both sides of the bridge to twelve feet. Um, that was, that's the contract that's, that's still in place. And so uh, that was twenty twenty-one, and then we entered into a contract with SCJ Alliance in August twenty twenty-one. Um, again, the previous, previous council members uh, to widen, including uh, to twelve feet and explore a couple other options. And so that process continued all through twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Nothing council did to delay it. It came to us with all the options on the table. We spent about a month looking through them, and we made a decision of, of twelve and eight. Uh, and that was after over five hundred people's public comment and survey. And so that was the end of last year. We had the, uh, August last year, we had that preferred alternative passed. And it wasn't until February of this year that WashDOT came back um, and notified that uh, several changes that were going to increase costs, including, you know, the existence of catwalks that apparently up until that point, they didn't know were in there. So it was in February this year that due to WashDOT requirements, um, budget or the cost of the project went up. And so we very quickly pivoted um, to twelve and five, which again is the least expensive option. It's cheaper than eight and eight. It's the cheapest one out there. Twelve and five is the least expensive. That's what council chose, and we chose it quickly because we knew and we were in agreement, time was of the essence. So that has been passed, and there has been nothing until, until this recent decision by WashDOT, and just thank you to the mayor for reaching out to WashDOT to get them to reaffirm their existing contract with the city that's been in place since twenty twenty-one, and that they'll honor that. So just want to set the record straight there, and I look forward to continuing on this project and the preferred alternative of twelve and five that this council passed a long time ago with a lot of involvement from the community. And uh, that's it for my council report. Back to you, Council President.
Thank you, Council Coughlin. Next up, District Four, uh, Council Rebolowski.
Hi, I think I have a few slides. Oh, look at that. More parking in the loading zone all night long on Washington Avenue. The good news is um, council has been working very hard on a ordinance that should be coming. Hopefully it's on the agenda for next week's study session, and then we'll be able to vote after hearing public comments the following week, which will make it illegal for cars to park in any marked bike lane. Um, so that'll be good news for everybody. Of course, you know, if there's an emergency fire department, police department, they get on the sidewalk like they do everywhere in the city. So nothing changes for that. The garbage trucks, there's no problem because they have big lights and they slow everybody down, so all the vehicles are slow and the cars can, and bikes can merge together. So no changes there. Um, tomorrow night, I am ha- hosting a um, town hall, and our Public Works Department is going to come and explain the elements of the comprehensive plan that we're currently working on, and there's a very important survey. And um, and that's going to be the main discussion point. I know a lot of people have questions about um, the Washington Avenue and Eleventh Project. We'll be discussing that at our Public Works Committee meeting on the seventeenth, so the public can listen in and comment at that point on that project. But I hope you all come tomorrow night and um, we all need your feedback. Right now, the survey is kind of interactive, but I did talk to staff and they said that written comments also are taken instead of just putting dots all over the, the city of Bremerton. Anyway, that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, District Five, uh, Council Goodnow.
All right, just a couple of things to note. Uh, the Charleston District has their meeting coming up on Tuesday, September seventeenth at uh, six PM at um, trying to figure out what the location is. Oh, oh, location has not been determined yet. Uh, you know, an interesting thing that they're working on is an event called Calhoun, uh, which is going to be on October twenty-second, so they are seeking volunteers uh, to help do a family Halloween event uh, or Calhoun uh, on October twenty-second. So you can reach out to the uh, Charleston Business District um, uh, on um, social media. Facebook is where they're mostly found. And just a reminder that uh, third Saturday of every month is the Forest Ridge Park uh, cleanup. Uh, it starts at nine AM, uh, and it's a group of folks that just help uh, steward uh, pull out ivy and pick up bits and pieces and uh, uh, keep the, keep the park uh, beautiful to enjoy. It's full of uh, native species, because I don't think we've planted, uh, I don't think we've ever planted anything there. I'll have to find out for sure. Uh, so anyways, it's, yeah, that, whatever. Uh, okay, I've, I've pulled much ivy there myself, and uh, it, we can use more help. So um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, Vice President Mokler with District Six.
You need to turn on your microphone. Microphone.
Microphone.
Microphone? Microphone? Okay. Um, so this is from T S Elliott's The Hollow Man. Between the idea and the reality, between the motion and the act falls the shadow. Council is tasked by the voters, and because I love- Council is tasked by the voters, and because I love you all, I am not reading the whole thing from the charter. So um, just a really brief thing, we are, our our task is to create policy with ordinance and regulations. And to do budget, basically set tax and spending policies. Um, we set policy and the administration execute it, executes it, thus the executive branch. Sorry, it's like I'm responding to people who are no longer here, so what can I say? Um. So for example, in November twenty-two, and you've all heard this often, we set aside ten grand for toilets downtown. That has still not been executed. Um, and there is literally nothing we can do about that. Um, we created a noise ordinance that has resulted in one citation between January two thousand twenty-three and today. And there's nothing we can do about that. Um. We uh have a parks recreation and open space plan that calls for the that. Calls for encouraging the use of natives um and for shade trees, and yet. Um, we see planting plants that specify trees that Washington State University says really good for a parking strip. If any of you have been in Safeway or Winko, you know, right? Like, you don't want a tree to bust up the parking lot. That's the kind of trees that are planned, at least for Haddon Park. Um. Our comp plan and our regulations call for protecting beavers, but our regulations could really improve in expressing that intent. Um, again, showing a whole lot of love by not going into all the advantages of beaver habitat. And the new state regulations um that encourage and protect. These creatures that increase storage and will reduce things like seeing salmon swimming across over the top of a road. That was pretty much it. It's uh. I think every human being. Aims to do things and. We don't fully complete it, you know? It's like, I, for example, did not turn out to be Shakespeare, so. There you have it. Um, a- and I think all of us recognize this is part of maturity. It's like. You shoot for something and you keep on shooting for it, and if you don't make it, you don't make it. Do I have another thirty seconds?
Yes.
Cool. Okay, um, so that was philosophy, and now moving on to District Six Council Report. So. Um. Yeah, really moving right along here. Um, so this coming Monday on nine-nine. Finance Director Mike Riley is going to explain the upcoming budget so that all of us can understand it. And therefore meaningfully make public comment on it. This is a fantastic thing, and if you have the opportunity to come. I'm not asking you to bow down to Mike Riley, but like a couple of thank yous would be great. Um, next slide, please. Okay, so uh this is um a a a very small pleasure. Uh. The person in the front is Rosalyn Medina. Oh, wait, the person. This is weird. Yeah, 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 it's it's an odd thing. Um, so the person in blue, there we go. Is Rosalyn Medina. She is a certified public accountant with a school system down by Port Orchardway. And she has come to join our audit committee to be somebody to bounce ideas off of for our auditor. Um, we got her a carrot cake and I was at Safeway and that was all I could think of to put on it. CPA yay. So inch by inch, step by step, we progress. Hope to see you Monday.
Okay, next up, we have District Seven, Councillor Younger. And I'm gonna start your clock now.
Thank you. Well. I can talk a lot about philosophy. I didn't know that was an option, but uh. Now that I know, I'll start writing notes. I attended the Audit Committee meeting virtually. Had I known there was be a carrot cake to be served, I would have been there in person. That's my report. Thank you.
I don't know why that killed me so much, Eric. Okay, bringing us home. I guess I actually do have some slides today, friends. Um. Oh, it's really hard. Okay, it's better on your screens there. What a beautiful shot of our lion at Lions Park. And um the the next slide is the, I want to know the history of the two different lions. See, oh, go back. Oh, I guess you had a preview of what's coming up. But is this one of our older lions that was moved? I I I would love to get, can. Uh, it's the same, roughly the same size as the other. So I need a history on the two different lions. Because I believe this one is a little more historical. He looks a little more worn. Um, so if somebody could update me by the next meeting, that would be great. Audit Committee, yes, please. Yes, Councillor Younger, please update me.
I am happy to report that was before I was on council.
Wow, okay, it was. Um, and so I just a couple lovely shots. You know, greatest park in Bremerton, Lions Park. That was beautiful. A lot, go ahead to the next one. We had a lot of uh wonderful activity going on the other day when I was heading down there. Um, so here is the Pine Road Basin Outfall. Director Nucky, did I say it right? Eh, all right. You guys, I got there and um the foreman, Robert up above, was very protective of the space. He says, who, you know, who are you? And why are you taking pictures? I said, I'm with City Council, and he got really friendly and and uh. But very protective of the space. Um, and it just looks amazing. It just looks amazing. And I know we've seen photos in our study sessions and and they're in our packet, but we can just breeze through a couple of the photos there. Um, and I think I have a video. Um, so these are what's what where, this is where we've come from. So I don't know if you can see, but this is where we've come from. Here's the crack. Uh, you can, and she's gonna go on loop a little bit, but you can see this is just rocks holding up a broken pipe. Um, and uh this is where we've come from, and it just looks amazing. Uh, thanks to the crew uh who is in charge of getting getting that done. Um, and that's all for my slides. Um, I wanted to just kind of take a moment and just uh. Just give some appreciation to public service. Um, we, public service is not uh for the faint of heart. Um, it's comes sometimes with um negative feedback, um controversy. Uh, sometimes the community is for you, sometimes the community is against you. Um, and so we've uh, I just wanted to throw a shout out to our community servants at uh the Bremerton School District. Um, I wanted to thank Dr. Crawford for his uh service to our community, to Bremerton. Um, and uh. And uh I'm sure he's not just gonna be sitting back gardening all day. I'm sure he's gonna be moving forward on the next phase of his professional life. And um, and and I and I appreciated his service to our community for the time that he was here, and I'm sure he'll still be of service to Bremerton. I wanted to also, and I and I want to make sure that I that that everybody knows I'm speaking as uh Councillor Chamberlain, not as president. And not as the voice of City Council. This is just me speaking, okay? Um, I wanted to. To throw a sincere thanks out to the Bremerton School District for their integrity. Uh, for putting up with a lot of uh a lot of negative feedback and um. And for acting in the best way they knew how to. And I know that it was not an easy decision to come to. Um, to make a a staffing change in the way that they did. Uh, I think what really calls to my heart the most um in uh in what's going on with the Bremerton School District is uh the fifteen. Folks who uh were essentially uh whistleblowers um and spoke out. And uh that's a a role that should not be um uh missed. Um, it's hard to speak out um against folks who are in power, and um I just wanna. Say thank you to those folks, and um I know that it wasn't easy. That is all I have tonight. I would just accept to just say um to quote um. Our uh most longstanding councillor here. Sometimes you uh. Just take your lumps and you move on, and it's time to heal and move on, and uh. That is all. The next study session uh will be next week. On the sixth floor, council conference room, a Wednesday, September eleventh, beginning at five PM with a remote option available by Zoom. This concludes tonight's regular council business. This meeting is adjourned.